Building, but it's not a restaurant. Folks were one member short of a quorum, so. Huh? Are we recording? I'll start over. Good to go? Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the August 16th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. We now have a quorum. To my left is Jay Suckman and Patrick McTeague, to my right, John Baranco and Sheri McCartney. Before we get started, you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Where's our flag? There it is. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. If we could get an approval of the minutes from the July meeting. So moved by Patrick. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Baranco. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Just to clarify, it's a motion to approve?
I'm sorry?
It's a motion to approve? Okay, just clarifying. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've got three items on the agenda. If you're here to speak on any of the items, please stand and be sworn in.
If you're going to speak to the board, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? With a smile. Yes, thank you.
All right. Item number one, case UDP S22022. There is a request for a deferral to the October 18th, 2023 meeting. I know that I received an email, I would imagine, from you, and I told you that I would give you airtime, so if you would like to, and I'm assuming I'm doing this correctly, so if not, please tap the brakes. If you want to explain to the board why you would rather not have it deferred, please come to the, yeah, come to the podium.
Is the applicant here?
Huh?
Is the applicant here?
I do not. Well, so that's part of my concern, which I was going to bring up, but the applicant last time was Ms. Toothacre, and this time, or the agent for the applicant was Ms. Toothacre, and this time it's Ellen Bogdanoff, and I don't see her here. Are you here on their behalf? So their agent is here.
Usually we have the applicant speak first, but that's hard.
Well, they're asking for the deferral. He's challenging the deferral.
May I just suggest that they ask for the deferral first on the record, because it just was an email, so if you could just state on the record your request for a deferral and the reason for it, and then.
I'll make you the chair. Turn your microphone on.
Apologies.
There you go.
Cody Rogers from Becker and Paulikoff, on behalf of Ellen Setner Bogdanoff. She had a trip planned prior to this meeting, so she wishes she could be here, but wants your support on behalf of our client. We are the recently new hired council for the project. Based on previous community feedback, we are redrafting. Our plans to submit to DRC, they have not been. We have an additional community outreach Zoom scheduled for Monday at 7:00 PM that we will also submit to DRC, and we request the deferral.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jay. I'm sorry.
No problem.
He's got a question for you.
I don't know if it's for you or for staff, but if there are still things that need to be submitted to DRC, then why is this at this board?
They're changing the plan.
Right, so but wouldn't that need to just then go through DRC and then come to this board?
Good evening, Jim Hetzel. The project has already gone through DRC, and they're doing a revision to it through the public outreach process. They're making revisions. Normally, we don't have them go back to DRC, but because this was already scheduled on a planning and zoning board agenda, it's got to stay on a deferment timeline. Unless the applicant withdraws the application completely, then that would be a different scenario.
And then what, like, what's the threshold that constitutes a revision to versus, like, just completely changing the plan?
So what we do is we work with applicants, depending on the extensiveness of the changes, to determine whether they have to go back to the DRC, be scheduled on a DRC agenda, or if it's minor, or the adjustments are within review, second review, or resubmital kind of status. It depends on how extensive the changes are. We make that determination.
And so you've made the determination that it goes.
Well, we haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
So I believe they're making revisions, and there's nothing, has been submitted to make that call yet.
So does it get, just get, if you determine that it needs to go back to DRC, does it just not come back here again, or does, do we have to then?
No, we would have the applicant, like, withdraw the deferment, withdraw completely, probably refile the application, if it goes back to DRC, give it a new case number, and go through the process of review as if it was a new application.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And Jim, just one more thing. Is that pretty common?
It depends how extensive the changes are. We try to work with applicants and make the determination. If all the reviewers on the DRC committee have to look at it again, we send them back through the DRC process. If it's just architectural, then we don't really send them back through the process. So it depends.
And you haven't seen the plans to determine what it is.
Exactly.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Anybody else? Sheri? Okay.
Good evening, Board. Richard DeWitt, on behalf, 200 South Andrews Avenue Government Law Group, on behalf of the, one of the neighboring property owners, the Harbridge, one of the affected parties. We did submit a letter that should be part of your backup, and at the last meeting, we did request the same, that you do not grant a deferral, and we're back here again. Based upon what we've been told by the developer, a couple of things. One, at, before the last meeting, we were told within 60 days we would have had complete new plans, revisions, submitted to staff, submitted to us, so our planner could take a look at it. That never occurred. Now, since then, we do know they purchased, the developer purchased the building in between our building and the subject property. So it's our understanding that that's going to be part of some new development. And at this point, our position is twofold. One, under the statute 166.033, they had 180 days from when it was deemed complete from staff, staff deemed it complete. If you grant this continuance, it's going to be 514 days. And under the statute, the statute allows a reasonable extension between the city and the applicant. 514 days is just not reasonable under any circumstances, so that's our position. The other half of that is, this has been delayed and delayed and delayed. Our clients don't know what's going on with this property. We even heard from the applicant's representative that they're planning on going back to DRC. The proper thing to do here is for them to refile, go back through the entire process with their new plans, so staff can look at it, we can look at it, all the neighboring properties can look at it. So we're asking you to deny the deferral and deny the application and have them go through the process anew. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, we should also have deferrals too, you know? We should have defer, not deferrals, disclosures, sorry. My brain's not working this evening.
Yes, please. Due to the fact that the email was received, so, yes, please.
Then we'll pause this and we'll do disclosures. Patrick?
Received the email that was sent out from the party that just spoke.
Jay?
Ditto.
John?
I spoke to the council for the Harbridge. I did not receive the email.
Sheri?
I spoke with council to the Harbridge as well.
I received an email from council and responded that I would wait until this evening, but I did not speak to him. Okay. Any questions for the Harbridge Council? Okay. Well, there's a request for a deferral. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I mean, discussion?
Or discuss it?
Yeah, I mean, just in listening to the gentleman, it seems like clearly there's, nobody knows what the proposed plan is, you know, they bought the building next to it, but it's speculative whether or not that is part of or not part of this plan, and the determination has not been made, because the city hasn't seen what the revisions are, whether or not it passes the threshold for going through the DRC process again or not. Obviously, everybody's eyes are on this clearly, you know, and if there's major changes to the plans and it's, that somehow doesn't constitute a revision, you know, that will be very clear to everyone, but I don't, otherwise, it's all just speculative that there are or are not major revisions, and that determined has not been made yet. So I think it makes sense personally for us to defer.
To defer?
Yeah.
A quick question. Do you know if the property next door, is it under contract, or has it closed with the same owners as the application?
Can you please speak into my?
Richard DeWitt again. It's my understanding that it's closed. I checked the property appraiser's office. It's not uploaded yet, but it has closed under, I don't know if it's the same entity as which owns the subject property, but it's my understanding that it's a developer.
Okay. And, well, you don't want to speculate, so I get, I won't ask the question I was going to ask. Any other comments or discussion? Sheri?
Mr. Chair, I support what Jay's saying, because the applicant's counsel has told us that they are making revisions. It's about to happen. I understand that that has been pledged before, but as Jim told us, it's going to go through their review and potentially doesn't come back. And that would solve any issue with it being unduly extended. So I think that just extending it for the, for a time certain, everything that happens in the process, we'll kind of lay it out on the table.
Does the, does the applicant have an idea how long, how much of a revision is being done? In other words, is revision incorporating the soon-to-be or already acquired contiguous piece of property?
I am not sure. I do know we are focused on the community outreach portion, so that's why we have the Zoom scheduled to meet with stakeholders and base our feedback on that, but this is the first that I'm hearing. But again, we are new council, so we do have some catch-up to do with our client.
Is the community outreach on the current plan that has been gone through DRC, or is it under a new plan? So you're doing outreach on the current plan that is the subject of this case?
Right. And that's Monday at 7:00 PM. It would have been sooner, but a lot of them are not in town.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
If I may, if you know there's a change, why would you be doing outreach?
I think.
If you know there's a change, you're going to have to do outreach again.
I think it's just a further involvement with stakeholders, but I can definitely circle back with you.
You don't need to circle back, maybe I'm just curious.
I have a similar question, so I guess I misunderstood. The outreach is related to the plans as they stand, and at the same time, you're telling us that you're going to revise them.
Right.
Altogether. How extensive is that revision? Do you know?
I don't. And the city doesn't know, because they haven't been submitted. So it's, it's, it's a paradox.
And in all fairness to the council here, they're just putting their toe in the water, trying to figure it all out.
I get it, so.
Let me ask this. When, are you asking for it to be deferred to a certain time, or is that?
And then let me just take a step back. Based on the previous plans that were, based on the previous community feedback, we are redrafting the plans, and those have not been submitted to DRC. It's those redrafted plans based off old community feedback that we will then present to the community once again for continued stakeholder engagement.
Well, and I will suggest, that's only a suggestion, I don't know why they're waiting until October. Two months, long time. They've got a meeting on Monday. I don't know how many more stakeholder meetings, but between now and October 18th, we have a September meeting, which at, which time hopefully Ms. Bogdana, Bogdana, Bogdanov, Bogdanov should know. What was she, a senator or?
A senator, a state senator, yes.
Please don't tell her I butchered her name. Thank you. Hopefully, she'll be back, and she can maybe address the board with more, if somebody wanted to bump it up to a September here. We've got a lot of options.
I think that this clearly, I just think that for the best use of everybody's time, you know, it's, there needs to be a determination made from DRC. DRC needs to receive the plans, whether or not it constitutes coming back to this board or not, and it would just be like a poor use of this board's time to put that in September, because there's no way all that's gonna, it's unlikely for all of that to happen by then. So I would suggest, like, three months. Let's reevaluate this in three months. But if it's not done by then, that's, that's like reasonably, you know, that might reasonably suggest that you, there's no intent to, like, move forward or whatnot, so I would, I would really use that time efficiently.
Definitely, we agree.
I'm sorry?
I move.
I was agreeing.
I move to defer this three months.
To the November meeting.
To November.
Do you need that additional month or so? You've asked for two months.
He doesn't know the plans. The city doesn't know the plans. It may be just cleaning up a couple of dimensions, or it could be including the parcel next door. It's, you know, it can vary that much. As Mr. Hetzel said, depending on how many disciplines have to review it, will dictate whether they go through a whole new DRC or whether it's purely a revision, but that won't be, one, does anybody know when the revised plan is going to be submitted for evaluation or review or change?
At this time, no. We don't know the exact timeline, and if there is property acquired that makes the site larger, it's a whole new application right off the bat.
Well, you can say that if it includes it and increases the density, but if they keep that parcel separate and dedicate a park, that's a totally different animal. So if something like that happened, it would appease a lot of people, so we can't speculate at this point how they're going to carve it up, who's going to own what, what are they going to build? So I would caution everybody from, you know, assuming one way or another what's going to happen with that little sliver.
Who requested the October date for the deferral?
Yep.
So that, to me, seems to be what they thought they needed. Again, I respect what my cohort has said here, with another month, but I mean, for a minute, we were just trying to shorten it, now we're just all of a sudden extending it. I would consider, you know, giving them what they, you know, October, two months, because again, we all are a bunch of questions. Why give them, they didn't ask for more time. They don't think they need it, apparently. I don't know. That's my two cents.
Well, and then you can determine whether they're actually moving forward or whether this is just spitting around.
True.
Right. If they defer it, again, they're probably going to feel the wrath of this board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. DeWitt was here, not here at the, at the fire department two months ago, I think it was, June, wasn't it? And requesting, and we shut him down, and now he's back again, and, you know, I feel your pain, but I think it may be a long way around to the backyard. So, anyway, any other discussion?
If somebody moves to do it two months, like, I'm okay with that too, but my, I would feel in two months from now, if there hasn't been progress, that there must be some pretty major changes being made.
I would argue that if they're asking for two months, they're going to be prepared to present in two months, because DRC doesn't move that quickly, so I would argue that it probably isn't that big a deal that they're changing. No offense, Mr. Hetzel, but DRC takes a long time these days, waiting till you go for a permit. So I, my gut tells me there, there's modifications, but not something that's going to require a re-discipline to review. So, anyway, any other comment? Somebody want to make a motion?
I had made a motion for three months, but I'll amend that to two months in October's meeting.
You don't need to amend it, because you didn't get a second, so if you want to restate your motion.
Make a motion that we defer the item until the October 2023 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting.
October 18th?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional comment? Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. McCartney? Yes. Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Suckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
And Chair Weymouth?
Yes.
Pass five to zero.
Okay, so that is deferred till the October 18th, 2023. Next case, case UDP T23003. My understanding is there are some corrections that need to be brought to our attention?
Yes, good evening. Michael will be presenting some changes to the text that was in your backup material, and he's color-coded it for you to make it a little bit easier. We want to make sure that you understood the changes. I know that was brought up at a previous planning and zoning board meeting about anything read into record and changes, so we want to make sure that we provide something that you understand and that's clear. So he'll walk through those changes for you.
Good evening, Board members. Michael Ferrera, urban planner, case planner for the, for this item. I don't know if you want me to go through the, the item first and then kind of go through the changes, or I can just, let you know, if you, if you go to the third page of the actual exhibit with the proposed changes, the proposed amendments, everything that's in green is what was touched right now. Everything in green is what was touched right now, what was amended or changed right now. And then everything in yellow is what we want to replace it with. And this was done pretty quickly, so it's not a, it's not 100%, but.
Wait a minute, you're bringing us something that's not 100%?
It's not the ideal situation. But yeah, we'll, we'll clean it up so that it makes a lot more sense, but item number, so F6 and F8, everything that's in yellow would stay. And then F9, it'll be everything from where it says approval of a development plan shall be, and then it'll continue to review it in accordance with.
I'll just add to that, you know, what Michael's explaining is what you see highlighted in strike through, but in green is being taken out. What's not highlighted in strike through is what the existing code language is today, and then what you see in the underlying yellow is what's being proposed. So in your backup material, we wanted to make sure you understood that there was a change to the text language in the backup material, and that's what you see in the strike through in green. And then the other strike throughs that are not highlighted is existing language today in the code.
Seems pretty straightforward to me.
If you don't like the green, next time we could use blue.
Then go with the Halloween colors.
Halloween, maybe, colors, yes.
I like to strike the RO completely out of the code. It's the worst zoning on earth.
Michael, if you want to give an overview of the, of the item.
All right, so yeah, Michael Ferrer, urban planner, case planner for, for item UDP 23003. This item is twofold with amendments to sections 47-5, .60, .D, .1, .A, residential office zoning district, and to section 47, .5, .60, .F, planned residential office district. So for section 47-5, .60, .D, .1, .A, the amendment was, in 1997, the city implemented an overhaul of the Unified Land Development Regulations, the zoning districts. Specifically, some of the amendments include zoning district title changes, uses, and open space requirements. At the time of this overhaul, there were some references or some items that weren't adjusted or that weren't changed. So this amendment is to simply just remove those references. So this amendment is to simply just remove those references specifically to this section 47-5, .60, .D, .1, .A, which referenced the zoning district of R4, which was actually converted to RMH 60. The second amendment, the second portion to this amendment is to section 47-5, .60, .F, planned residential office district. So in 2013, there was another Unified Land Development Regulation amendment to section 47-5, .60, which amended buffer yard requirements, allowing alternative standards to wall buffer requirements, and, and the revising, the revising, I'm sorry, or the review and the approval process. So the amendment specifically to the review and approval process was based on a communication to City Commission back in October of 2012. The communication stated that the requirements for the Planning and Zoning Board and the review and approval of the development plan were not necessary, and so that language should be removed. So at the time, when that ULDR amendment came forward, similar thing happened. There are some references that were not removed. So this amendment is basically to remove those amendments that were supposed to have been made in 2013.
Hold on. So by striking this out, the review is now, there won't no longer be a review?
There won't be any planning and zoning board approval.
But there never should have been in the first place, right?
Yep.
And we've never reviewed one of these, have we?
I think there were two that were reviewed, and every time they did come, you guys mentioned why. Well, the board mentioned why is it that it was coming to you guys in the first...
Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes, it is. Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm here if you have any questions.
We're all sitting here in suspense. I'm going to show you something else.
What's he got?
All right. Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard on this item? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public portion of this. Bring it back to the board. Does anybody want to make a motion, or is there additional conversation? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment proposed by city staff to the ULDR, sections 47-5, .60, .D, .A, RO, and section 47-5, .60, F, planned ROC.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Patrick. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. McCartney? Yes. Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
And Sherwineth?
Yes.
Pass five to zero.
Motion passes you now. So thank you. Since you're up there, might as well tell us about case number UDP T23006.
So this is a proposed amendment to the Unified Land Development Regulations, section 47-11.10, list of permitted and conditional uses for the commercial recreation district. So this amendment specifically is just to replace any reference of shooting...